Okay, it is seven o'clock. This is a special meeting of the Fairfield Solid Waste and Recycling Commission. The meeting tonight is held to approve the solid waste and recycling regulations that we discussed at the last meeting. And I was asked late today to keep our, the plan is to, I'll be making a motion and if there's a second, we'll have a discussion. But the plan is to vote strictly on chapter four, which is the, which are the proposed new fees, the proposed new tipping fees. And I'm going to, first of all, I guess the first thing we'll do is pledge allegiance. So first of all, let's go around, I'm Tim Bezler, I'm the chair, Ron Blumenfeld.
Ms. De Fire.
Andrew Becker.
Hugh Dolan.
Mike Peszots.
David Becker, interim CFO.
John Mazzaro, United Home Sanitation.
Thank you. In our last regular meeting, we had a long discussion about the solid waste and recycling regulations, which had not been revised since 2016. Because there are many additional proposed revisions, a vote was deferred until the special meeting. And during the last week, I got a lot of corrections and revisions from many people and sent out a revised draft dated April 14th that each of the members and John, these have got to review. The most substantive change to these regulations, other than updating a lot of things, are proposed increased transfer station fees, which were proposed as part of the solid waste recycling departments fiscal 2025 budget meetings with the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance. And I plan to make a motion to approve these regulations dated the 14th. And if there's a second, we'll have a discussion followed by a vote of the commission members. I was asked late today to concentrate on the, to really vote on the fees themselves, which is in chapter four, which you all have. And I have some information about that we can talk about during the discussion. The regulations themselves, we've been advised to have the town attorney take a look at them before they're absolutely approved, and we'll do that. But if the vote today is positive, I've arranged to have a public hearing to be held on Tuesday, April 23rd at 4:00 PM here. And after that, the new fees will be able to affect, if approved. It was there and now, I want to, let me check the participants here, I don't know, oh, there's Ellie. Ellie, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, fantastic, thank you for joining us, I know you're away someplace.
Yeah, no problem.
So I want to note that Ellie Fatai is also in the meeting via Zoom. So I like to note that the revised solid waste and recycling regulations, particularly the new fees in chapter four, the regulations dated 14th be approved effective July 1st. So that they're in effect for the fiscal year 2025 in town Fairfield.
Can I just, I'm so good.
You go first.
Okay, wait, throw out a second. Well, for, could I, it's kind of a parliamentary subject here, I mean, isn't there a motion on the floor right now that's open? I can't, I mean, honestly, I'm not sure how it's dealt with, but there's got to be a way. Don't we have to deal with that motion first?
The motion from the last week?
No, it got old, I think.
I think, I think I, I think we held it at bay, it's right, did you first?
No, I, I think I withdrew it.
Okay, well, then that's fine. You could do that now, too.
I withdrawed the motion from last week, for sure. And so I, you know, the motion that is on the floor right now is to approve these regulations as listed in the document dated April 14th, which I sent to everybody.
And do you like that motion? Are you saying to approve the regulations or to approve the, the fee increase?
My understanding is we can approve, David, if you could help us here, we can approve the regulations, but they still have to be, the actual full document has to be reviewed by.
Well, I spoke to the attorney today, town attorney. And he said you can approve, you can approve this fee schedule with the existing regulations. Don't change the regulations right now.
Okay, just from an agenda, especially because it's a special meeting, you do have item number three, which is a continued discussion of, so you can certainly follow the agenda and discuss the matter. And then under item number four, it's left as a vote. So either item number four, you can make a vote, or you could actually do a vote, most likely under item number three as part of that discussion. But I would, you sort of skipped, if you made a motion to make a vote, I mean, it's fine if you skip number three, but just.
Well, yeah, you know.
It's a little bit odd the way it was written, but it's.
Yes, I will.
And I continue the discussion, then make your vote.
Oh, well.
Pick two, or just make it clear that you skipped item three and went right to making a motion on the floor, which is fine, too. Just parliamentary wise, it's a little bit great. But, and I believe that last time, that, yeah, that it actually got me through it and was back. So regardless, you can probably make a clean vote on this agenda.
Okay, since, and yes, I probably set this agenda up incorrectly, but, well, we can, what we can do, I believe, is discuss, what I put up here is, which I sent to all of you, is really the effect of what, of the increased tip fees. And if we can, we can discuss that now and then have a motion and a vote based on what you see here. And so why don't we do that?
Let me just ask a, just a quick question, I have a couple of lingering things about the actual text.
The text?
I don't know.
I think, well, and we can talk about that, and I don't want to bog everything down. And I would like to have a pretty short meeting because, and I think knowing that the attorney is going to be reviewing the text, we can vote on the fees and then take care of that later, take care of it later. And well, one thing I wanted, the bottom, the one thing I wanted to do during discussion, you know, these, these, and just to review, for those that weren't there at the last meeting, tip fees charged to Fairfield by Wheel Innovations or Wheeler Brader for bringing our municipal solid waste to Bridgeport Trash Energy Plant will in fact increase 22% July 1st, that's a fact, that's not going to change. That's about a half, just under half a million dollars in increased expenses, assuming 31,000 tons, which is pretty close to what, that's what John is using, and that's pretty close to what the industry has been. The tip fees for homeowners and residents bringing solid waste to the transfer station have not changed since 2015 and 2014 respectively. And if the proposed new fees are, if the proposed new fees are implemented on July 1st, the transfer fees, the transfer station fees will add about $760,000 to the revenues of the department. And that's again, based on estimated tonnages, which were very much in line with what we've actually seen in the last couple of years. So the total expected revenues, the total revenue of, if these new fees are approved, is about 3.8 million, which is about 73% of the fiscal year budget for the department of 5.2 million, approximately. Those numbers, well, the numbers are up there, I'm just rounding them up. Now, if we fail, if we don't, if we don't agree on these tip fees, then the Wheeler Brader tip fees will be absorbed by the department and the revenues would then only comprise about 58% of the department budget. So that's, that's really the, what we're voting on.
Clarification?
Yeah.
If you vote to, let me, let me just put it this way, is whatever we say of the tip fees going to be, is that the final word, or can we just seem to be overridden by the finance people? Or the RTM, or the Board of Selectmen, or what?
Yes, we understand we set a budget based upon an assumption of the schedule, but ultimately the commission.
So no one can override what we set down right now?
Correct.
That, that, that is my, that's my understanding, I.
It's a public hearing.
It's a public hearing. They explained, there's not a.
There's, yeah, there's a public hearing, but it's, it was undefined, there's no, there's no vote at the public hearing. I mean, you have to, you have to hear the public on it, but it actually happens.
If a bunch of angry people from the public, then you might want to consider, but theoretically, then we're saying, you know,
you go back to the drawing boards, but your vote tonight is what sets that in motion. And the Board of Selectmen's proposed budget, the Board of Selectmen, and then the Board of Finance on the revenue setting side, they've already set based upon these assumptions. And the RTM doesn't even touch revenue anyways.
Well, just, just for fun, what if we decided to vote on something different?
If it was in, if it was less, then you, for lack of a better term, you'd pull a hole in the budget. We're depending on you, I mean, you could, we could have, you know, you could go in any direction, but we're only relying on the commission.
Why is that, that you would set a budget, an assumption?
We set an assumption because it had not been touched in 10 years and we were taking the expense side. And when it came to, you know, we were like the final day of trying to set the budget, we were trying to address a known adjustment. Had everything stayed the same as a year before, we probably would have left it at, you know, a quarter million loss rate and then looked to have addressed in the future year. But based upon the final calculations that came in, it was, it was too big to just leave alone. So we worked to, almost with something that would be, we felt, hopefully, would be received well by the commission as a reasonable increase in that it had not been increased in a decade and that we were only looking to absorb up the near-term shortfall. We didn't overshoot it in our projections. But it would have been, you know, it was a significant hole that we were looking at just from their price increase, unfortunately.
And I, Mike, you raised a good point about, you know, this being, is this a fee or is it a tax? And I know one, one, I think I mentioned that, you know, if we were starting from scratch and how are we going to fund the department? You could make a decision, do we do fees or do we, do we do taxes? Well, it's a combination of things. Right now, I think you're roughly, the fees cover roughly 60% of your, of your department's expense. If we don't approve this, it'll be, it'll be considerably less because we have an increased fees coming to us. If we approve it, as I mentioned, the fees will be about 73% of the budget, the rest of it carried in the tax base.
So can, since you addressed me, I can, can I?
Yes.
Sure. Again, I said all along, I'd rather be, I'd rather not be taxed through fees, okay? Fees are a hidden tax, is what it is. So people can, on one side claim, no, they don't do it with the police department, they don't do it with the fire department. I don't know any other departments that they do it with, that they're raising right now. It's just this department because they believe they can. And it is a tax. And, but you know what, if you raised my fees, my service fees, and I'm talking, me personally, but I'm speaking on behalf, I think of a lot of people. I, maybe I'm not, maybe I'm crazy. But if you raised my service fees, a few dollars here and there, and that money was going toward waste management, I would be all in, okay, for that. But when we put this together and we're putting aside this, the rest of the regulations, there's nothing in the regulations that is changing how we're dealing with waste management. So these fees, taxes are going into the general budget fund and being used wherever else they might be needed, but not being used solely for waste management. No programs that are going to actually make a change in waste management.
Correct, the fees are being, absolutely being used in the solid waste and recycling department to operate the department.
Really?
Absolutely.
Really? Does it go into the general fund?
No, no, this, 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 it's actually a revenue line specifically within the department and it's going to counter fees that are coming to this department. I also note that this department has not seen an increase in the fee in 10 years.
Where does the money go, money goes into the general fund? Which budgeted to this department?
Budgeted specifically in the revenue lines of this department.
Absolutely, yeah.
So.
Now, it's not being used for any new programs, it's being, you know.
But I think that's because there's become such a shortfall in operating costs.
So has the police department, so has the fire department.
The fires, they actually used to have very little fees and now it has several hundred thousand years. So they've, they've actually, over the course of the last, like, decade, a lot of the time, there's been a big shift to specific departments for, so it's more targeted to the UAs and different things that are causing other expenses. I understand, I understand and respect your point, I just, this, this department has not had an increase, it's had an increase in the budget each year, but it's not had an increase on the fee side since 2014.
Some of that goes because they were making money in recycling, which they're no longer making. So during that time period, those 10 years, they were making money.
Correct.
And not giving it back to the, to the fund or to the budget and making any difference in waste management. Now you want to look back in one shot, as if that never happened during that time period. I don't know, maybe I'm not making sense, but during that time period, we were making money and that's why the fees weren't going up.
So in 2014, the last time the fees were raised, fiscal year 2014, the budget was $3.7 million for this department. And this year, you're looking at the expense side being 5.2 million. And whether fee changes have occurred in that window.
And correct if I'm wrong, the Wheeler Brader fees that are charged to Fairfield had not gone up for quite a while, is it?
John, I know they go up and you.
Yeah, they go up all the time.
I think it's just this.
This is the big, John.
This is the biggest, okay.
They've gone up 2%, 3% or something like that, just based on the index. There's actually three quarters of the index that is going up there. So now it's basically because they can. There's not many other places to go with it, so they can do it. So now it's, it's a new contract and they're able to raise into what they want.
Okay. Question, Mr. Scherer, the numbers that you talk about, so we think of this bill as a positive. Essentially, we're covering where it was expected to be a $475,000 increase from, from the WEN people and we're covering it to the tune of maybe $735,000. Who has tested those numbers, who's checked those numbers, where are we getting those numbers from? Have you done any work on that, Mike?
This is, and I actually, I said this around, I mean, this is interesting.
On a lot of these things, it looks like one, one dollar, two dollars, three dollars. How do I know that's coming to those, those actual numbers that we're going to get those numbers? I guess that's.
That's, that's on, you know, on that.
Okay.
Based on, we have approximately 50,000 people that bring their car. So going up one dollar, that's $50,000. We have about 18,000 or 18,500 tons of commercial. We can increase the amount to $23,000. And that, we have low numbers for.
Close numbers.
Close, sure, based on what we've been doing.
If we had had this increase and we're contemplating now, last year, what would, what would the numbers be about? About the 735,000?
It would be a little bit more, because typically, it was about 2,000 tons of commercial.
Yeah, and if you look, the biggest, the biggest residential is 19,000 tons, commercial is 8,400. So the, the four items that I list here, the tip fees, are the major, the tip fees are the major cutages. There's other things that, that are in page four here, but these are the major impacts on the, on the town. But to answer your question, I think we'd be pretty close to the, to the revenue and the total revenue is about, fees about 3.8. Last year, you know, it might have been, we'd be very, be about the same amount, very close.
Mr. Scherer, have you had any discussions with the homeowners as to what the impact on their customers is going to be?
I have not, I have not, I've heard, I've heard that to pass these through would be something like $2 to $3 a month for most people, but I don't, I did not do anything, I don't have a real impact on that. Obviously, people bringing their, their trash to the transfer station are going from $6 to $7. So that's maybe, depending, if you come four times a month, that's $4.
I'm concerned with those, but I'm, I was at the transfer station several times and it's amazing how many people turn around and leave when they, when they total price.
$6, really?
Yeah, yeah, I even saw that today. Anyway, you know.
By the way, by the way, the fixed income residents are not increasing at all, they're still at $2, so that, we're not.
Right.
What do those people do with their garbage if they're turning around and driving it to the transfer station?
I hate that.
The ones I saw today when I garbage, you know, different items, you know, they said what they had and.
Whenever it was untold stuff.
And they turn it off. So people are aware, they're, they're, they're on their mind.
If you look at the, if you look at the list, yeah, there are things here, if you bring in a toilet or a sink, it's $11 each. If you bring in an automobile, tire is $5. That's, but, yeah, you're right, they can choose to go elsewhere with it, but I don't think any place is cheaper unless they're doing it illegally, throwing it away illegally.
Well, that's, that's my point. Well, I want to continue, you've heard me say it before, this, what I categorize as disincentive to do the right thing. People are going to do the wrong thing. And they can be arrested. Okay, good luck. And it could be, yes, it could, and I'm not saying, but, but that's a, that's a whole other issue when we're picking up garbage on the side of the road that's left at the park because they didn't want to dump it and things. It's just, it creates a cycle, you know, I brought this up before, you've heard me say it. All of these raising of fees without adding some sort of incentive to do the right thing, everything we do is disincentive. And going back to, and we said for a tip of raising the fees to people who, in this particular case, that use the service when everybody who lives in Fairfield should benefit from good waste management. Just like we talked, same way about education. So everybody who lives in town should benefit from it, not just so everybody should pay for it. When you are taxed openly, transparently, then you, everybody's paying for it. If you do it this way, a lot of people don't even know what's going on until they get their $3 rate.
The user fee, of course.
Yeah, you want, you want to get rid of your trash, it's a personal decision that you're going to get rid of it. Trash is costing a lot more money now. And, and we, you know, when somebody, when somebody goes to throw things away, maybe they'll think twice about it. You know, I mean, if fees go up, I mean, we have to address.
Taxes are user fee, too, though it's the same thing.
Well, I, I think what you're dealing with is direct, you know, user.
But I agree with you, what you're saying, it's, I think, though, that because we're at the point of the budget and the way the town is financed and the departments are financed, we, they're facing a real, they're facing a real, a real increase of operating expenses.
Well, when I first got involved with this, first of all, I was amazed that nothing had changed in 10 years. Because what, what in our lives, that we, what else in our lives hasn't increased at all in 10 years? And a lot of things, a lot, I was really surprised that it had gone on that long. To me, it's just, this is a catch-up. And I don't think anyone here, I, I'm not asking to, let's do this every year, but let's at least catch up. And in my opinion, I like to catch up and have, you know, have the user fees pay for 73% of the budget.
They didn't raise the fees because they didn't need to. Of course, they were making money on that.
When's the last time we made money, John? I mean, it's been a while, it's been a long time.
Yeah, six years, 2018, probably, right? 2018, 2019, so it was, so yes, the first few years of no increase covers that. And then probably COVID slowed down any.
COVID, wow, COVID, yeah.
Also, we might, we would have done it, but.
I've said my piece, you guys, you know. I've only been on the commission three years, so I, I want to go back that far.
Can you help me out, I'm just, I'm just, she just gave it. The financial hall, MSW, it said proposed increase, $23, what is that on here?
Well, if you look at the first column, it's.
What is the proposed increase? I want, I just see the proposed increases you gave.
Residential hall in this area.
I mean, I did not put the increase, I put, I put the proposed new. This is, this is a new, this would be the document, this would be the fee schedule.
What is it on here?
It's not on there, I, I have it on here, so to, to, as for information only. Where am I voting on it?
This is the sheet I was given.
It's 4.3.2.1.
4.3.2.
Oh, yeah, over, over 250, $110 a ton, yes.
4.3.2.1, residential hall, okay. So that's, that's the increase right here. This is an additional rate of $1.10 for 20 pounds.
Right.
Or $110 a ton. And the current is 87. Okay, hey. This is why it was very difficult to follow, because. So the next one, which is $120, is that the commercial one?
Yeah, that's correct.
Commercial 120, so this B. Okay. You're confident that these numbers are going to result in the $730,000.
Yes.
What is the weight of a typical truck that comes in to the station? Certainly, it's, it's always will over 250 pounds.
Like a typical load?
Yeah.
Five or six tons?
Yeah. Five or six tons.
Sometimes.
The first two step-ups are just.
Ten, yeah, ten on some days.
Yeah.
Kind of depends on the day and the neighborhood. Yeah.
What is, what is our, the bulky weight seems awfully high. What is our cost to dispose of bulky waste?
Because bulky waste is picked up by environmental, uh, Pennsylvania. Right now, it's $99, but it's.
So even, even outside of the little, that couldn't be going up that, that much, too. We pay $99.
No. R3, 160.
R3, yes.
So you're paying as a tip fee is?
I think 165 now.
40.
185.
Okay. There are other places that are cheaper, I think the virus is cheaper, but they haven't been able to, like, one ton.
Yeah, I mean, I personally, I go to North Atlantic City Farming and I think I pay 120 a ton. That's why it just seems.
I mean.
It just seems up there, like.
Reality, only one.
Right.
This stuff is being shipped out to Pennsylvania right now.
Just in open top containers? They load it open, right?
They roll it in.
Not compacted?
Into a dumpster, 40-yarder, they take it back to their yard. They may pull out some things that they can and then have it put into a trailer. A 40-yarder.
And the other one, I had a question of, it's just 140 a ton for scrap metal? Or something that we're, we are still making money on scrap metal, although it's not high right now. It is, it's a profit item for us.
It is, it is a revenue, but there's also work involved where you have to, you know, basically smash it down to get it into trailers, pulling out a lot of plastics. It's very rare stuff that you can get just straightened out. It's, right now, there's just a wash machine or something that's taking up a cubic yard. So you guys smash it down and make it, some of it down there that goes into the, to the floor. So there's more involved.
So any other discussion, or should we go? I guess the next thing would, is there any other discussion? I'd like to make a motion that we approve. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the, the new fees as indicated on page 19 and 20 in the proposed regulations.
Chapter 4.
Chap, chapter 4.
Chapter 4.3 and 4.4.
Yeah. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Second? On favor, say aye.
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 Ellie, do you want to vote?
I'll vote, okay, aye.
Opposed?
I'm on the fence, but aye.
Okay, the vote is, is 5 to 1. So the motion is passed. And I think, I want to thank everyone for, I like, and I had another item on the agenda if there were time. We talked, there was a lot of new business, a lot of things to discuss along the lines of improving this whole department and getting the waste down. But I think at this point, let's keep that for the next meeting, for the reg, regular meeting and, and move on from that. So if, I'd like to, there a motion to adjourn? Move.